Council meeting, uh, Monday, September ninth took order. And first order of business is the invocation and pledge. If you'd like to do it. Imca- invocation?
Do you have to write a?
Um.
Thank you. Let us pray. We seek blessings on the task before us. Bless our efforts with clear insight, our deliberations with wisdom, our work with clarity and accuracy, and our s- our decisions with impartiality. Amen.
And join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and like I said, Jerry Manning, they had a, uh, has another meeting tonight. He's a way at a retreat for the, uh,
Oh, that's right.
Uh, Southern Maryland, uh,
Leadership.
Leadership program, so. And we do have one additional item for the, uh, agenda. And that's a liquor license letter of support for the Rex, uh, one day extension of premise, so. Okay, and everyone should have received a copy of the minutes. Last meeting.
I think there's a updated copy at your table tonight.
Yeah, updated copy of the table. Anyone have any comments, questions?
What were the changes from?
Um, there was just, um, on the page,
Page five.
Page five, uh, the motion just got separated. We just, the two highlighted, uh, at the very top of the page where Mayor Burris entertained a motion to close the public hearing. It needed to move down to where the, um, after the public hearing comments.
Oh, okay.
It wasn't anything significant.
Okay.
Any other questions? Anyone care to make a motion?
I'll move to approve the meetings from the August twelfth Town Council meeting.
A second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Okay, Rebecca, Presser's report, please.
Right, I have your table today, and I have to provide the August financial information. I was out last week, so it's a little bit late, wasn't there for your workshop? But during the month, I did not need to transfer any money to or from the local government investment board. So you have the August report for FY twenty. You also have the unaudited FY nineteen report. Those have also been posted to board docs. The only comment that I'll make is last week, the final income tax receipt for FY nineteen was received. It has not been posted to the unaudited report yet, but when it is, the total income tax will be six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars.
Okay.
Far above what the original budget was, of six hundred.
Right, right.
And if you recall, I wrote it down during the year to five fifty.
Right.
Um, so that was obviously a surprise. Better to be that direction than the other direction. And today, we did have two members of the new edit firm arrive to start fieldwork. And they are walking downstairs who were part of this week.
Okay. Thank you, any questions for Rebecca? Okay. We'll move on to the planning department.
Sheena is out today, but, um, at last month's, um, planning and zoning meeting, there was just one short item. It was a boundary line adjustment, um, in Meadows, a town run, just they're selling the, uh, original house that was there. And they, once the, um, um, survey was done, they found they needed to, things weren't exactly where they thought they were. So they had to do a boundary line adjustment. And then coming up for September sixteenth is just the old town auto project. Um, we did revisit that. They've done away with the c- the, uh, retail portion, which, um, brought down their EDU requirement. And so it's all office at this point. So, uh, that will be on the agenda on September sixteen.
Any questions on planning? Thank you. Uh, Christie, please report. Everyone's got a copy of it, uh.
Everybody got a copy. I was gonna say, who's busy? Except for us, just as busy.
Yep, yep.
We have the tasty St. Mary's all day Saturday, and then the following is the fair for us. And then we have, uh, September twenty eighth, there's a lot of events on the same day, so that weekend. But lots of car seats, lots of back to school stuff, so.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all your help. Any questions for Christie? Thank you. Okay. Michelle, your report, please.
Hey, if I could jump around for just a minute, I know, uh, Joe Curly's here. He has to get King to football, I think, so. Um, I'd, he's just asking for a liquor license letter of support for one day extension of premise, um, at the Rex, um, to accommodate their event September twenty eighth. It's exactly the same setup that, um, we approved in April, which is just expanding the area on the sidewalk where his tables are. And he'll have, um, barricades up and entry points and, uh, exit points. Um, and it, I think it worked really well.
It does work well, and it's not, we're not asking, asking for a variance or, um, higher seater seating capacity. It's same seating capacity, it's just more of a relief valve. It gives us more room in the restaurant for people to move around, and that's bottom necking, and it just works very well for us.
A little more control, I think.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So.
That wasn't added today, so if you have any questions, I, I put the sa- it's the same, um, layout and everything. That was a, with the one eighty.
And there were, there's no issues with eighty-eight compliance or anything like that?
No, I mean, the, the liquor board, I mean, people can still pass on the side or, or go around it, I guess, yeah.
Any other questions or concerns? Anyone care to make a motion?
I'll move to approve the letter of support for a one day extension of premise for the Rex Class D liquor license to accommodate a one day event on nine eight, twenty-eight nineteen.
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
I'll have your letter tomorrow.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay. So with us today, we have Ellen Lewis, who is now president of the Leonardtown Business Association. And she was just gonna kind of give you an update, let you know what, what's going on with the business association, kind of her, um, outlook on things, so.
Yeah, okay, so thanks for having me.
Thank you.
I took over in, uh, July from Joe Orlando. And, um, I don't know how much you know about the LBA, but, um, basically, our mission is to give the business owners and businesses in Leonardtown a voice to the Town Council and to support all things Leonardtown. So there's a whole lot of collaboration, um, between the LBA and businesses and town. This is just sort of where, where that happens. Um, the LBA has just recently launched a, a customer facing website, which is very Visit Leonardtown kind of focused. I don't know if you've had a chance to see that yet, but it's visitleonardtownmaryland.com. It's, it's really exciting, it's, it's beautiful, and I think it's really informative. And it's the kind of, um, tourist focused effort that I think we've needed for the businesses in town. So that's just some of the stuff that we do. Um, you know, we, we share a vision of, for Leonardtown, you know, we share the same goals, the LBA and the town and council. So I really would like to work more closely with you guys in the coming year. I have scheduled for Friday, this Friday at eight thirty in this space, a meeting for not just the LBA, current LBA members, but for all the business owners in Leonardtown. And I would like to invite you to attend that. My goal is to get a hundred percent membership, and I want to hear from the businesses what they need from us. You know, what is it that we're doing that you really value? And what is it that maybe you would like to see us do? And certainly, the LBA has the authority to, to do quite a lot for them. But there are other things that I think are gonna come up that are probably more collaborative in nature and require the LBA and the town to work together. And I, I know that you support the LBA and the members. It would be great if, you know, one or all of you could attend that meeting just to sort of hear and show our membership how much you do support and value them. So, again, part of my goal is to invite you to that, and.
That's at eight thirty, Friday.
It's at eight thirty, right here in this space. Um, and it's, you know, it's gonna be very collaborative, you know, brainstorming and gathering ideas and sort of then parsing through and prioritizing and seeing what, what it is that people want and, and what is realistic and what might not, might not work so much. Um, but the, the other thing is I just wanted to thank you guys for adopting the plan and doing all of the work that you've supported with Mayhem Rieckel. Um, the, I can tell you that the LBA is very, very excited about the future and what that plan is presenting. It's, it's thrilling to be part of it. The change in energy among the business owners in Leonardtown because of that plan is enormous. Um, a lot of the business owners have already taken advantage of the, um, the matching grant to allow them to do some of the facade improvements. And, um, so my, my second goal in being here is just to, to thank you for that and to encourage you to, if possible, implement that, that plan absolutely fully. It, I think it will be such a good return on investment for everybody concerned. Again, the, the energy associated with the plan and the outlook and the collaboration that it represents, I think, is just tremendous. It's, you know, it's the way forward. And, um, I don't know if you study small town, but I look at that a lot, like what do successful small towns share? And some of the things, among others, that they share, um, is a collaborative relationship between the business owners and the elected officials and the community, which Leonardtown absolutely has. A shared vision and a clear path forward. And I think that it's just a really exciting time to be in Leonardtown. It's an exciting time to be, um, at the helm of the LBA. And I'm looking forward to working with you guys. And if there's anything that you need from me or the business community, please contact me directly. I am always available and looking forward to working with you. So, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One, one, um, the Mayhem Rieckel, um, plan that they presented, uh, you know, you, you sat in on that, uh, presentation.
Yes.
Just wanted to get your thoughts on that for the, uh, the wayfinding and the re- rebranding.
Yeah, it's, it's tremendous. I mean, it really kind of, um, the way that they approached this process was tremendously important. They, they didn't just come in and say, okay, well, here's what we see. They went to each and every set of stakeholders and community and kind of worked with everybody and heard from everybody. And they didn't just come in and overhaul. They, they built a brand based on our history as a town and our shared understanding and vision and worked with everybody to sort of find what, what we valued and what we really wanted to keep in the town and, and where there was, was going for improvement. I just, I think it's going to be, um, it's going to put Leonardtown on the path to being exactly where we want. This wonderful place where everybody wants to go and, and everybody's really proud of. Drawing people from the local community as well as farther the field. You know, that, that, the word with the idea of the, the shade trees that provide kind of a canopy in town that sort of define it as a, a place where you can go and, and hang out with seating on the, on the outside. I think you'll see that that will draw additional businesses into town. It will make the businesses that are already here more successful, um, by having additional traffic in town. Um, it's, it's just a wonderful collaboration. I'm so impressed.
We had over seventy participants, people come in and participate.
We had like eight sessions, I mean, it was just phenomenal. And I, I think you attended several of them. And then on Friday, kind of just a wrap up with a small group that, um, you guys are gonna see the presentation. Um, I, we had sent out, we're moving the October meeting to the twenty first. And, um, Mayhem Rieckel will be back and presenting the, the new branding, which is every single person in the room was blown away. We are so happy with how it went. And, um, so they'll roll that out at the twenty first at your meeting and do the whole presentation. And then the next morning, LBA, um, is holding a special meeting so that it can be presented to them because we really did have a phenomenal turnout. And, and they really listened to what the people said. I mean, we heard it over and over again at the table on Friday, that they just, um, everybody was so happy that they didn't just come in with a preconceived motion, notion and, and do what they wanted to do. And so I think the outcome is fresh and exciting and just.
What I really like about it is it's adaptable. It's not just, not just this logo and has to be this logo. It's, it's many facets that can be used in many different ways, so.
Lots of variations, and, and I think you're gonna be really excited, so. They'll be here on the twenty first of October.
Wonderful.
Um, Randy just pointed out to me, um, I said, visit Leonardtown Maryland, it's visitleonardtownmd.com. I'm sorry.
Well, I would've found it. That's what I wrote down, isn't that funny?
He knew.
Yeah, and that's a spotlight on businesses in Leonardtown and all the things to do. But it's not just, even though it is an LBA funded website, it is, it's inclusive of other businesses and events that are, um, that are a draw into Leonardtown. So would be delighted to have your input on that and, and have you visit, so, thanks.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Ellen, just, uh, I thank you for stepping up and being president. To have been, having been president, you know, for eight years myself, I, I know what you're gonna be dealing with. Thank you.
Don't scare her.
Well, it's nice to have a new perspective, and I think you bring a lot of energy and professionalism. And, uh, we really appreciate the, the camaraderie and cooperation. I think it's been great.
Wonderful, well, I, I really, again, I really am looking forward to working with this council, and I would like to consider us partners. And I would like to welcome you not only to our special meeting on Friday, but to any LBA meeting that you are interested in attending, because it is such a nice opportunity. One of the benefits of the LBA meetings is that our members have access to the mayor, the member, the representatives from economic development, you know, from the, the county. Just people that they wouldn't have access to their information and, um, face to face time with on, on average day. So it really is a benefit. So, anyway, thanks.
Thank you so much.
Anybody have any questions for Ellen?
Yeah, so anything you can do there?
I have a question for LaShelle real quick. So the, the grants that we did, the matching grants, can we get an update at the next meeting, like who got them and what they were?
Um, I'm waiting for the, uh, grant agreements to come back and make sure everybody.
Okay, so it's still.
And I'm going to give, give you a list of exactly what.
Perfect, that sounds great.
So we were able to fund all of them. Um, one of, one of them dropped out because of historical trust issues. Um, the Vanderwall building is already, uh, painted. They've already used their money, so, um, they all went out a couple of weeks ago. So I'm just waiting to kind of finalize the list and then I'll send it out exactly what is, you know, the list consists of.
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, next, uh, the pr- a presentation by Karen Stone, who is the mu- museum de- division manager. And it's regarding a soil collection ceremony, um, that we had found out about the event planned for November first at Port of Leonardtown. There was some confusion about who owned the property. So, um, I just asked because it is town owned, that Karen can't come and give you a little brief. And then there was an article in the, uh, Enterprise after that, um, that talked about the town cooperation. And since you didn't know anything about it, I just wanted her to come and explain it to you. So Karen?
This is one of those stories that is not easy to tell. In eighteen eighty-seven, a man named Benjamin Lynch, uh, Benjamin Hans, I'm sorry, um, was arrested. He was charged with making an improper proposal to a young white woman. Um, he was an African American, he worked here in the county, his family was from here in the county. Um, so they arrested him, they put him in the jail, the little stone jail that we still have right over here. And, um, a couple of weeks later, a mob broke, literally broke through the front door of the jail because the jail keeper wouldn't let him in. They held the jail keeper at gunpoint. They went up and got his pants out of the cell, and they took him down to what is now the Port of Leonardtown Winery property and lynched him from the which is a tree which hung over the public road, Newtown Neck Road, right where it crosses over the little stream there. So we know where it happened, um, we know when it happened. We don't know exactly what happened, and we never will know exactly what happened. It's one of those stories that, you know, her tale changed a little bit, the newspapers got a hold of it, changed it a little bit. But it's an important story. It's the only lynching that was ever documented in St. Mary's County, so that's a good thing. There is a good thing about this story, so. Um, this is part, this has become part of a national project, the Equal Justice Initiative. They're the ones that actually found the lynching, got it documented, and we got involved through them, through the N W A C P, the U C A C, and a number of other groups that are part of the building bridges, um, dismantling racism in St. Mary's County. I was asked to spearhead the project by Dr. Wolf Howard, the president of the N W A C P, because I am head of the museum division in St. Mary's County. It needed to be a, a, an organized entity that could work with the Equal Justice Initiative. So we wrote the proposal to participate as the, the, the St. Mary's County representative for the Equal Justice Initiative, to do the soil collection ceremony and ultimately to put up a historic marker. The first step was to get all the papers together, get all the information together for the soil collection project. And the idea, the thought is that the soil contains memories. So that's why they do the soil collection. Uh, two jars will be collected. One will be sent to the National Litchin Memorial in Alabama. The other one will stay here in the county and will go to the museums, to the libraries, to churches, to anybody that will accept a poster exhibit and the soil collection, um, jar. Um, and there are churches already that are interested in having conversations. Um, the Archdiocese of Washington has an office for diversity, and I've already spoken to that woman, that's the director there, and she's willing to come down and, and run public discussions and, and talk about the lynching, what it meant in eighteen eighty-seven, what does it mean now? What's going on in the county now and, and what other conversations need to happen, that sort of thing. So the, the, um, soil collection, remember, ceremony is scheduled for November first, which is Maryland. Um, I mean, it's not your day, that's why we chose that day. The property is on the winery, we've already talked to them about it. Um, we need to talk to you, obviously. I saw commissioners owned it, and I clearly thought it was the county commissioners, sorry, but I work with them. So more regularly than I work with you, so then found out that it was actually probably your property. Um, so we would like permission to dig up two little jars full of soil from that property. Um, Father Bobbietta Stanavolishis is gonna be a vision at that ceremony because that's the church where Mr. Hans was taken to be buried. Uh, we're also working with, um, Dr. Carmo Davis, who is an ethist, and he's going to speak and make a presentation at the ceremony. And then the principal at St. Mary's Rickett High School contacted me, and their students are gonna get involved with, um, in the ceremony by writing and reading poetry and perhaps doing some music. They'd like to design the cover for the pergrating artwork and that kind of thing. So it's turning into a, other nice community ceremony. Um, and we're also, we will also lay a wreath at that time as well as doing the, the digging of the ground and, and that sort of thing. And the jail will be open that night as well, it's the first Friday. So we started the winery and then have it open next week. It'll be moved up and, and is at that site too. Then after that's all done, we file the paperwork to get a historic marker put up. We'd like, it's a, one of the traditional gray ones with the black raised lettering. We'd like to put that at the jail site. Um, it'll get more publicity, I think, see, be seen more there. And in, uh, working with the Equal Justice Initiative, one side will tell the Benjamin Hans story, the other side will talk about dismantling racism in general. So we're working with them on that project, but we hope by this time next year to have that marker up. And ultimately, we, and, and the Equal Justice Initiative pays for all that. We don't have to pay for any part of that. We would like to also put some sort of a marker on the winery property. We'll have to pay for that ourselves, that's a way down the road, but take it out that as well, as well for the future. Um, so again, like I said, this is a, a hard story, but it's part of our history, and it's an important story to be told. And we will ultimately put something in the jail about it too, um, and have more of a permanent exhibit in the jail about that and other aspects of, yeah, the jail's history and stuff.
Okay.
They will be with the historical society.
All right, appreciate you coming today to give some background there, so.
Can I put a copy of the invitation in your packet if you're interested in attending? And it's really not something for a boat, it's just really, I felt like this is a bizarre property, you needed to know what was going on, and thank you, Karen.
And we're gonna take two shovels of soil for Karen.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
All right, so Jerry and Rafe are here, so I'm gonna skip back up to their, um, request for Bruder Garden. Shepherd's Old Field has requested a one day extension of premise for their Oktoberfest. Uh, the extension would include a common area at the back of the market in the garden area. Um, I did put a diagram in your packet, it's for October the fifth. Um, and Jerry's here and Rafe, if you have any questions or anything. So it's just the one day extension of premise, just like the rest.
So is it, I, I was confused on where it was, is it just the, the garden area, this?
Where, let me, I can show you.
Oh, I see, it's labeled.
So here's the outside area, so that's the Bruder Garden outside.
I gotcha.
So the striped is, and so then we're at the coffee bar.
So it's inside the building.
Inside and the other part of the outside.
Gotcha, it's the hatch part.
This is the children's.
Gotcha.
Got it?
Got it. It's not gonna extend into the street or anything like that?
No.
Going the other way?
It's all on her property.
Yeah, okay.
And you're on the, for Thursday, I believe, at the liquor board? Mm-hmm. And I'll have your letter tomorrow if it's approved.
Any questions?
And the outdoor area is all fenced?
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay. Anyone care to make a motion?
I move to approve the one day extension of premise letter for support of Bruder Garden for their Oktoberfest on October fifth, two thousand nineteen, per the submitted plan.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Just, just an added note, we're planning on this being a yearly, uh, function. Um, and we're hoping to go year by year and include it to make it a, a town, um, activity. Because there's nothing really else really in St. Mary's County that's separate up to the.
Yeah, very good.
So there better be dog than be, uh, deer housing.
Yes, ma'am.
That would be entertaining.
That's what I'm saying, he might show up with it.
That would be awesome.
I'll have your letter in the morning, and I'll send it over to Tammy as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is renewal of the sludge hauling contract. So, um, kind of a lot of information in your packet, but just to kind of give you a little bit of history. Um, last year, we came to you and, uh, extended the, the contract for Old Line Environmental for our sludge holding, sl- sludge hauling. Um, and they've been hauling our sludge since twenty fifteen. We've discussed and pursued other options since that time, but so far, we don't have another solution. At last year's meeting in July, we had looked at several options and ended up back at, uh, Old Line is our only option. Um, I've invited Jay Johnson here today, the superintendent of the wastewater treatment plant. Um, he can kind of descri- describe to you what the issues are, who all he's contacted. Um, and where, I guess, a lot of other places are in the same predicament. Um, the price is going up from eighty thirty-three per tonne to a hundred and twenty-seven twenty-five per tonne. Um, and I did have a long conversation with the Old Line, um, last week. Um, basically, the first couple of years, we were their first customer, they were trying to build a base. They had, they, uh, opened their own facility at Curtis Bay and, um, began hauling there. They've been really losing money on the proposition. They've since been bought out by Senegro, and they're really looking at, um, what their actual costs are now that they have some history under their belt. And so, um, the prices really are, everyone's prices are going up. So this, that's kind of why we started looking other places, so, Jay?
The main issue is how sludge is class, not a class B or class A, which can be used on land. We have now, have not actually, have not met the parameters for such sludge. And our sludge beds are smaller, kind of construction. Um, we're now down to eighty foot by sixty instead of two hundred by sixty. Our storage is limited, we cannot keep it long enough for it to, for it to be. And what's happening now, sludge is money, everybody pays the price. And it really hurts. And it really hurts small businesses, it hurts little play, little play, they can't, can't get in the haul of sludge. They have dust, they have dust fields hauling their sludge to landfill. And last year was a nightmare because of the rain so much. And also, if it had a, too many smell, they turned away. So, they had to go further, which cost them more money. I looked at them, also, I looked at Recite, which hauls their sludge, and actually could, uh, do a payment for our sludge. They said, no, it's too much for here, they bring that one player, but we have a contract with them, trying to get out of it. Um, and I understand that.
And they also haul for Metcom, correct?
Yes. Also, we used to use environmental organic, they were convincing them, they only handled class A sludge. We're on the environmental service, I reached out to them, we've, like, worked with them for years. And they said, everyone's having problems with getting rid of sludge. And the rain had really destroyed any landfill that they wanted to go to. So, environmental service said they'll reach out to us, they'll, they'll buy, and we can haul lighter sludge. But that's not what we have, we have solid sludge, but we are screw pressing sludge, and making at least sixteen to twenty percent. What we are trying to do now is try to store it longer, so it'd be lighter, cut down on the cost. Right now, I have one side that, uh, has hopes of anything, we're on a bid now to fix that. That way, we can haul most, we'll be storing more sludge, let it dry, and then make the weight lighter. But we could buy wet tons. Old Line, I asked if we could actually lower our price, because we have to load it ourselves. They said, no, because they felt, they felt that we've gotten over on there for years. I don't believe that. Anyway, um, anyone else that wants to haul it, it's private, it's going to cost a lot still, because they would have to bring a payload in, which would be about two hundred an hour, they'd load up, they'd offload. And when they haul, they haul in one trailer, out, thirty yards trailer. So, when Old Line, which is Senegro, comes to haul now, they will send three to four trailers down. We hire AB and H to load the trailer all in one day, try to take all the sludge out. If you take some more trailers, they'll bring the trailers the next morning and finish up. So, and, and looking at all of that, they are the cheapest for the amount of sludge that we have, which is around five hundred and thirty-three on average.
Tons?
Tons. Last year, it was more, because I tried to, uh, get it out of there with the price that they had an agreement on. So, we have up to six hundred. Hopefully, I'm saying hopefully, that we can store it long enough that it'll be under five hundred tons, which will help load the price. The price now that we're, we're about to engage in is a hundred and twenty-seven point two five dollars a ton. That means if a truck comes in and they load up, it's eighteen tons, that's times a hundred and twenty-seven point two five. I allocated fifty-two thousand, uh, for sludge hauling, it's past budget. And we will go with that, fifty-two five six eight. And we'll wind up paying this year over sixty-seven thousand versus fifty-two. So, my job is cut out for me this year, and lowering the weight, of course, I can.
So, in, in the future, you know, you're going to try and be able to, you're, you're going to be expanding the drying area to be able to dry it longer?
Yes, yes.
That project's out to bid right now, so we'll be bringing it for next month to, to fix the section of drying bed that isn't being used right now.
And we had to wait a year, so that was a bit hard, it's, it's hard to dry, but.
So, what do we have, what do we have budgeted?
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two, is that, yeah, so, where, do we have somewhere for to pull that additional money from, if needed?
If you look at what Mary F Y nineteen budget is, I don't foresee a big problem.
Okay.
Um, we've pretty much over budgeted maintenance, given it's a new facility. I've used to, I haven't reduced maintenance just because it's new. I've, I've left it at a level that I think allows us to build up some reserves going forward, as equipment needs to be replaced or maintained. So, I don't see that being a problem in F Y twenty.
The only way out, sludge went up thirty-six percent. We've only, you know, every five, five percent a year.
I mean, we've had a great relationship with Old Line, I mean, they do give us good service, they've gotten us out of a jam many times. But I wanted Jay to pursue every alternative, and I, I just don't think there's another alternative right now. So, um, we're asking to renew the contract for another year with Old Line, we'll keep pursuing any avenues that, you know, we can.
Recite calls from Metcom.
Mm-hmm.
And I called them up, we explained the same courtesy, he says, no, you don't have class A. And landfill won't let them bring down sludge to them. Only way they can get to landfill with, uh, Metcom is through emergency. And it's, I think, it's three landfills that they can pick from. One closes, the other one opens, but somebody said no to us on that.
What does it take to go from class C to class A sludge?
Well, actually, let me explain to you, I was on a little play there, and, um, listened to their stories. And they were planning to get a dryer with, um, lime feed to make it class A. And I asked them, please keep us in mind, maybe we can do a joint venture, because we're going to need a lot of sludge to keep it going. And we can also in charge of to bring our sludge over to that. So, they said, we'll look into that. But, like you're saying, we will have to have some kind of a lime stabilization, uh, and also, uh, time for it to react to the lime. If you want, I can just tell you on that.
So, it's, it's basically the composition of what's in the sludge, you know, what the chemicals are.
Yeah.
The pH has to be above twelve.
Okay.
And that pH is seven.
But if you got, if we achieve class A, then you think more people would be interested in bidding for it, or, um, a lot more, okay?
We'll be able to go on bigger land.
Okay.
Be valid land.
Like, like topsoil, or?
Yes.
Yeah.
And that will.
And cla- and class B is only fifty-one seventy a ton, even with Old Line, so, I mean, it, that would definitely be, and we did it for a long time. We, we did have land application, but we just can't meet it anymore.
Oh, okay.
So, with the upgrade, are we looking to move to a class, at least a class B?
That'd be nice.
Yeah, I mean.
We would have to have another digesting.
And that is something that, that we've looked at in the plans, it's all going to depend on final cost.
Yeah, yeah, I think with the upgrade, it makes sense to do that.
Yeah, I mean, that is something that, um, they batted into the plans, so.
Like, Madawoman, they have their own machinery and everything to put lime in and sludge. I mean, if it comes off a belt press, and, uh, that works with them, and they care to continue to fill the landfill. So, we have to look at that.
So, I mean, we'll continue to look for other alternatives, it's just, at this point, I think Jay exhausted every possibility right now.
Yes.
Yeah, sounds like it. So, how soon will you know about, like, um, La Plata and their fan and all of that?
They just started looking.
They just started looking?
And I said, oh, yeah, it is.
That's how we, how we, we'll, we'll, we'll support that. But that's, that's a, that's a, a big coordination, you know, trying to figure something out, I'm not sure how that would work, but.
They have proper best sludge, and they are eight hundred thousand, almost millions, but, uh, they say can't give us sludge fast enough.
Hmm.
So, the, the pH, the, the lime, you can put lime, and, um, and it takes some time, how long the pH is.
And we don't have.
You have machines out there, but you're looking at three, four hundred thousand dollars for them to be secured.
And we don't have enough land.
No.
To put it on, and there's no land over there.
No. We don't, we don't, we don't have enough storage area, and if we build one, then you have to make it for the climate that we have, where to dry, because when it gets hot in the humid, the moisture will bite into the sludge.
Right, right.
That double takes us.
So, it seems like out of the two options, we'd be better off buying a fan or a piece of equipment than trying to buy more land to, to store it?
That's true.
So, the actual.
The sludge that our sludge press does, when you're picking through twenty-four hours, and, uh, it's a problem there, you build it, you want to be there yet, and then you have to have a person there to move the stuff away from, from the organ that we have. So, the only thing we're doing is really trying to set up where we can drive, and get that up there. Uh, the manpower that, uh, environmental, Old Line, environmental, and now, people took it over. That they have the trails, they have everything, and we have to supply and load it.
Right.
A lot of people don't have the trails, so, it's a plus, it's a minus, because in a sense, so many of us at one time just build all out of there. Whereas one man, you, one day, it's.
Right, right. But this problem isn't going to go away anyway, we look at it, it's probably going to be more expensive going in the future.
And with more, yeah, with more people connecting.
But then once we expand, we'll have more sludge.
Yeah.
Right. So, probably, something that we need to be.
It's just going to go up and up.
But it's everybody addressed, you know, everybody's in the same situation.
Right.
I mean, we're just, at this point, we're just looking at a one-year extension again, just, we'll just keep looking for alternatives and, you know, coming back to you and, or giving you an update.
I mean, I like the idea of being proactive and trying to work with La Plata, that sounds like a good, a really good answer. Or, you know, finding out what the piece of equipment might cost and, you know, see what.
Yeah, we're very easy to work with, because we're there, and, um, some of the players. Also, I'll look at, um, closing the building, see if that would help, and, uh, someone to look at that.
Okay. Yeah, I, I mean, I'd like to, you know, not be kicking this can down the road every year, it's just extending the contract, so even if we extend it for this year, um, which I think is probably our only option, but, you know, try to have something in place so that
True.
in, in the next couple of years, we're, you know, being proactive, we're ahead of this a little bit. That'd be great.
Is this the last year of their contract?
It, it was expired, we haven't bid it for a long time, because we haven't had any options.
Right.
I mean, we ex, was twenty fifteen, I think?
You can get all, all down, so.
Yeah.
Twenty fifteen was when we bid it, and they ga- and, you know, so we've just been renewing their, uh, the last few years, because that was the only option.
Each year. Right, okay. But I'm glad you're looking at other options now, hopefully by, next year, we'll, we'll have other options.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that'd be great, I think.
Okay, anyone care to, uh, make a motion?
I'm, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, Tyler.
We're both interested in sludge.
Yeah, yeah, I did not know, I'd be so informed on sludge when I took this position, I'll tell you that. Like, you wouldn't believe what we talk about. Um, I'll do it, Tyler, I move to approve a one-year extension to the Old Line Environmental Sludge Hauling Agreement.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the last item is the, uh, storage container for the carousel. Um, in twenty eighteen, the town accepted the Leonard Town Volunteer Fire Department Carousel for future use at some other location, they were going to get rid of it. Um, Tony Wheatley has been, uh, has reviewed all the equipment and determined that the best thing would be two twenty-foot containers, we originally talked about one forty-foot. Um, but if we get a forty-foot, you have to get a crane in every time, so with the two twenty-feet, uh, containers, he could have them delivered at the, um, carnival lot. They could be loaded, and then A B and H could actually move them to their site, or if we want to move them down the road, A B and H could do it, we wouldn't have to actually get a crane in. Um, and then, the, the next option was that he was looking at, um, what the purchase would, could be, how much would cost the purchase, the refurbished ones, instead of just paying rent, because we have no idea how many years this is going to be.
Right.
Um, so, um, at eighty dollars a month, in, in three years, we would pay for both of them. We would then have them, we could, once we don't need them, um, his thought was, we are always just looking for storage, storage, he has a lot of parts stored. He's been wanting a storage container, so possibly down the road, they could be used for, um, storage, uh, at the, at the wastewater treatment plant or, um, somewhere else. Or, we could sell them, we'd actually have something to sell instead of throwing the money away renting them. Um, and then, um, there's a local provider that provides a one-year warranty, they're class A products, and they'll paint them any color we want, so we can do something really neutral, so they're not going to be an eyesore. Um, so, that's what we're recommending, he, um, had gotten three prices, um, and, um, so that would be, uh, two thousand six seventy-five, including delivery for the local company, um, and, um, that was the recommendation from Tony. And we did not budget anything for the storage containers at this point, so it'll be something that we'll have to go back and look and do a budget amendment, uh, no matter what we do. Um, but I just think that the best option is to actually buy, and we'll have something at the end, instead of just throwing money out the window every month. Because it's, it's really going to be years until we're able to refurbish that carousel and have a location to put it, so, um, I think it's a long-term investment.
As far as the funds, where, do you, any idea where you would pull that from?
I haven't done any research yet, so.
Yeah, but twenty-six hundred, I think, we consider.
Yeah, it's not a lot.
Well, it's, it's five thousand total, it's two thousand, twelve thousand, okay?
Or, yeah, right, right, five thousand.
I mean, off the top of my head, we've already received more in real estate compared to the, than we was looking at, so.
Right.
Yeah.
How come we want with onsite rentals?
Because they're a local company, and, and they're, the quality of the units, I mean, a lot of these places, they bring in just dilapidated, these are all refurbished, he's already looked, gone and looked at them.
That's local.
Okay. Okay.
They're class A, and it was, um, seventy-five dollars more. And it's the local company that provides a warranty, will paint them any color, and he knows the condition of them.
Got it. And where would we store these, with the carousel?
Um, for right now, we don't want to put them at the wastewater treatment plant, because we're getting ready for the expansion. But by the storage building on, across some good earth, in the, on the back part, uh, next to the storage building, there's room there, so that's where we're thinking we would store them at.
Wouldn't take any parking spaces?
No, it's, it's, there's grassy area.
There's the grass area there, kind of.
Not that the one car that parks there would be a problem. Just want to be, you know. But no, there's grassy area, so they would fit.
Could we have a carousel painted on the side, that'd be cool?
Well, you know, and we can, uh, put it out there and see if there's, um, somebody who's interested in doing it.
Little art for our district.
I mean, that actually is in the area where we're doing the design for the alleyway anyway, so there's going to be probably other art proposed for that area, so it's certainly something to consider.
Any other questions?
No, I think it'd seem smart to buy it, definitely, than to rent, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Sure.
Yeah.
We just have no idea how long it's going to be.
Especially with it, right, it's going to be at least three years, I can imagine.
Oh, yeah.
Well, and to own it and be able to use it or resell it.
Yeah, I think we always have a need for them, so.
Yeah, seems like a good, a good option.
Now, don't fight over the choice.
Just going to say, anyone care?
All right, so, I moved, uh, uh, purchased two twenty-foot storage containers to store the L V F D carousel, accepted by the town for future use.
I'll second.
From the onsite rentals, correct?
Oh, sorry, yes, from onsite rentals, at five thousand three hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay.
And I second.
Motion and second, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
I think that's all my agenda counts, just mark calendars, then, uh, October meeting will be October twenty-first. And then, like I said, the, they'll do an L B A presentation, if anybody wants to attend that, uh, the following day. But we did have just a really great particip- Um, but we did have just a really great participation, though, it was, it was a great week.
Yep. Okay, that it?
Yes.
All right, moving on to my report, there are a few things going on around town, uh, the hotel is being cleaned out as we speak, there's truck there right now, getting it cleaned out. All the furniture that's currently there is going to an auction, and they're planning on being opened by the, uh, tree lighting ceremony.
That's fast.
Yep.
That's fast.
They're, uh, they're not gonna do a lot with the first floor at this point, they're gonna be coming back and doing some minor changes, and then, then get open and make some other changes there, so.
Sure.
So that's why they can do it that quick, so. And Sweet Bay, as everyone see, that's, uh, under construction, and I just heard today, they're hoping to be open the first part of November also.
Okay.
That's very, uh, aggressive there. And has anybody been down to see the, uh, pier going in at the wharf?
Yeah.
So, yep, that, they're hoping that's gonna be done by what?
October.
October, mid-October, or, okay?
Mid to late October.
Yep, okay. And, uh, got an email from the, uh, representative from Bank of America Day, they, uh, they're moving forward with getting an appraisal for it, and once they get that back, they'll be putting it out for bids, so. It's not just gonna go on, on, um, um, up for, um, sale by a broker, they're gonna actually put, ask for bids on it, so. And so that's exciting also. Um, we talked about Mayhem Rinkle, so really, I think that's all I had.
On that subject, I just forgot to mention, I I've gotten a ton of comments on just the bushes that we've taken out so far, like how great it looks, we limbed up the magnolia trees, um, took out the end, um, shrubbery of the square, all the shrubbery out of Genie's Park, um, that'll get reseeded, um, in the next couple of weeks. And then the bushes around the monument, those shrubs are gonna be coming out after Taste of Saint Mary's. Um, the co- the four, um, sh- um, shade trees will be going in, and then, um, re- redoing the grass and stuff, so, um, I think it's gonna look great, and, um,
Yeah.
I've just gotten a ton of feedback, everybody loves it, so.
I'll tell you, dri- driving by the Genies, I see people sitting there now, I never used to see people.
Yeah. Actually, you can just get some relatively inexpensive, like, maybe colorful, um, Adirondack chairs or something, they just have them sit in there once the grass is in there.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, people, and we already have the picnic tables, but.
That's a great idea.
That is a really good idea.
Yeah.
They're colorful, and then we're doing a public art project that got waylaid because of, uh, Arts and Entertainment First Friday, there's a white board in the back that we put up
Yeah.
to do a public art project right there, that we were gonna do, um, Arts and Entertainment First Friday, so it'll, it'll just have to, it's one that everybody can participate in and painting it and stuff, so.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it'll be more color added, so I think just making it kind of a fun, casual place.
Yeah, I think that'd be nice.
That's awesome. Yeah, I'm surprised every time, I mean, since it's just dirt now, but, you know, you drive by, you're like, wow, people are sitting there.
Yeah. Yeah.
They're using.
There wasn't any room, you got stuck by those.
Right.
Yeah.
It's nice.
Miserable.
Looks great.
And you can see the, the bike rack that's back there.
Yeah, I saw that.
It was completely covered with bushes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, move on to council reports, Tyler, events?
Okay, so a lot going on, uh, the salsa and sangria party that was held on August sixteenth was a huge success, the online, the online tickets quickly sold out, so additional tickets had to be added. Uh, this was the completion of the successful six, six-week salsa ruda pop-up, pop-up class series that was taught by Donna Jordan. And then while they were at the winery, they listened to music by Leonardo Garcia and, uh, sampled some of the wine. In addition, there was another great evening on Leonard Town Square when Wesley Spangler performed for the Leonard Town Summer Music Festival on August seventeenth. Um, great crowd showed up for that. Um, the second Zumba Fitness and Tai Chi combo class took place at the Leonard Town Wharf on Saturday, August twenty-fourth, it was another great day of health and wellness. Attendees enjoyed the combination of high-energy dancing during the Zumba class and the relaxing period of stretching and deep breathing during the chi- Tai Chi lesson. Uh, Leonard Town kicked off Labor Day weekend with the Tai Chi and Wine, uh, Party, and at the Port of Leonard Town Winery on August thirtieth. And that was a well-attended event that brought out attendees for Zumba Tai Chi classes, included many, uh, new to Tai Chi in Leonard Town. Um, then on the square, it was a huge concert for Robbie Booth, uh, on August thirty-first, it was estimated that between fifteen hundred and two thousand people attended the event. Um, Chip Wood, Robbie's opening act, kicked, kicked off the event with an hour of popular country hits that got the crowd pumped up for the concert. A lot of upcoming events, so First Friday occurred September sixth, uh, for five to eight, Zumba Fitness Round Town occurred Saturday, September fourteenth, and the twenty-first at the Port of Leonard Town Winery from eight AM, or eight-thirty AM to nine-thirty AM. Uh, Bushwood Stock Three was held at Leonard Town Wharf on September seventh, uh, from two to nine PM. Um, the Taste of Saint Mary's will be held, uh, Saturday, September fourteenth from one to five-thirty PM. Coastal Arts Market, uh, will take place Saturday, September twenty-eighth. Um, the Port of Leonard Town Harvest Festival and Wine Stomp will take place Saturday, September twenty-eighth from twelve to eight PM. And then the Fall Bar Crawl will take place on the twenty-eighth from twelve, um, to twelve AM on the twenty-ninth. I think that's everything, there's a lot going on.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, did I miss anything?
Um, I just, if, you know, I just want to point out that the, uh, Witcher's Car Concert, that was originally scheduled for July sixth, it was originally scheduled to September twenty-ninth, so it extends the, uh, Music Festival. And, uh, the A and E First Friday had to be canceled because of the rain, but the performance artists that we're going to perform are gonna be performing at the, uh, November First Friday, which is the Day of the Dead, um, celebration, um, so we'll have, um, they'll do an aerial performance and also, um, fire dancing and other taxi performances, so. We're looking forward to having them there, we've got some really exciting plans for them as well, possibly an outdoor movie, um, so it'll be some, some different things, uh, happening that day. Uh, there is a Fall Festival, stepping back a month, I had, I, in October, the First Friday will be a, um, Fall Fest thing. And then, uh, we've put out a request for volunteers, so if anyone, um, knows if anyone's sixteen or not, who would be willing to volunteer for the Fall and Holiday Events, um, we're, we're in need of support for, for the events coming up.
The, um, the, the art, the Art Walk, they did have the Art Walk, and they, um, uh, Nell told me today they had, uh, two hundred people that voted on Friday night.
That it, okay? Great.
I'll tell you, I, I came up and walked right around eight o'clock and walked around the, the town, and the weather had dried up, and they said that at six-thirty, as soon as it stopped raining, that people just came out and they were going in and out, and there was a drum circle that was playing at eight-thirty.
Yeah. Yeah, the drum circle, yeah.
It was, it was cute, it was, it was nice, it was really nice.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it was a shame, but we had to make the call early, and they were saying rain until seven, and then it was supposed to clear up at eight, but the band wasn't gonna set up, and so, we, we, we kept the Art Walk in place and the indoor activities, but not the, um, outdoor activities now, and then October fifth is the October Fest?
Yes, October fifth is the October Fest Brew the Fest, at Brew the Garden.
Okay.
There'll be games, you know, like still on, but, um, should probably be a costume party and, um, and, and entertainment, we have two bands, not bands, they're entertainers.
Very good, anything else going on, on Shepherd's Old Field? Anything?
No, we're trying to keep up with the Leonard Town events, so.
Good luck.
Yeah, we're, we're trying to.
Okay, thank you very much, um, Christie, utilities?
So I kinda have like a, I don't wanna call it a PSA, but if you, uh, we were driving around last weekend and saw a pretty decent-sized water main leak at Wendy's, and we called and reported it, I just wanted to put it out there to make sure that if people see something, just to call it in, make sure, cause it is wasting natural resources, our, our well, um, capacities and stuff like that, so. Yeah, it was pouring into the, it was bad.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, Jay's not here, um.
SMMA's Wednesday.
I was gonna say, SMMA is Wednesday in La Plata?
Uh, where's?
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, I know Jay's planning on, anyone else going? I've got a, same day, I've got the, uh, meeting in Annapolis with the, uh, that's, that's the monthly conference call with the, um, Mayor's Association, so. Okay, and Mary, business development and retention?
Uh, yeah, I got the pleasure of meeting with the, um, with one of the owners of Sweet Bay, and she went through and showed me a diagram of what the, what it's gonna look like, it's beautiful.
Oh, yeah.
And what they're gonna do inside, really, really modern, and, um, so that's exciting. I stopped in and, uh, visited with the new owners of Fenwick's, Fenwick Street, um, Books, and she was really happy about how everybody's been, she said Leonard Town's been just really welcoming. Um, and so that was nice. I did a back-to-school night with Bourbon and Bose, um, Saturday night, two, two or three Saturday nights ago, where we had a bunch of, uh, eighth graders, rising freshmen, come over and do like a little fashion show, and they did makeup, and we didn't have as many kids show up as I would've liked, but, you know, I kept thinking as a, as a parent, it's so nice that we can host fourteen-year-olds here in Leonard Town and not worry about them, I was like, here, here's twenty bucks, go to the ice house, go get ice cream, and, uh, so I think that was a really nice event, so I don't know, you know, what to, where to go with that from there, but I thought that was a really, a really nice thing.
Mm-hmm.
So, and then, like I said, the Art Walk was, was fun, I walked around it, and there was a, it was, it was neat having the kids out there, and then, I think they were all high schoolers that were doing the drum circle.
Um, there's some adults and.
Were there some, there was a lot of high schoolers, and I thought that was a really neat event.
I mean, they do it every First Friday.
Oh, do they?
But it's usually held, um, over by, um, the Arts Council or inside the Arts Council.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Wednesday Davis with the Arts Council is kind of, organizes it.
Okay. Well, they had it in the, um.
Out in the square.
Yeah, out in the square.
Yeah.
It was really dark, I could not see them, but I could hear them, so I don't know, do we have lights on the square?
Yeah. Yeah, I know, the timing is awful.
No, they.
Well, they just, uh, re- uh, he might've done it this weekend, but I just got the bill for it today that they set, reset the timer, so I think they're just not, come, they weren't coming on because it's getting dark, so.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was, it was really dark, but, um.
So I would have hoped you'd get it before First Friday, but maybe not.
But it, it was cool, it was a nice event, so, you know, something that we need to encourage.
Did you wanna add something, uh, Brandon?
Uh, yes, I did, I just wanted to, um, say thank you to, uh, Mayor Burris and Old Town Insurance for sponsoring the Salsa and Sangria Night, um, Friday, September sixteenth. Uh, it was a huge success, there was a, a, as, um, Tyler, um, mentioned, the tickets sold out very quickly and, and it was extended, um, huge, they're still getting calls about requests for another follow-up event.
Yeah, I heard it was great, we, we're out of town or something that we.
Uh, I just, um, also, um, Main Street Affiliates are, which we are one, it's not the Main Street Designees, but the Main Street Affiliates, they're gonna be hosting their, um, semi-annual meeting here on September twenty-fourth, if anyone wants to stop by, I don't have the whole schedule yet, um, but I believe we'll probably start meeting here around ten. Um, it's gonna be maybe fifteen people, and then we'll do a tour, a walking tour of the downtown, and then end at Shepherd's Old Field for lunch, and then walk back, and uh, I'm gonna have Botanic Wood cater it, and then walk back here to find, wrap up the meeting, so, so we'll be here a lot of the day, um, and, uh, if anybody wants to stop by.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the cause? And I'll, you know, always put on here that I'll be hanging around if anybody wants to, uh, come and see me, but, uh, um, anyway, we'll go ahead and call the, uh, uh, entertain motion for adjournment.
So moved?
Second?
Second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.